Good evening. This is the first public hearing for the 2017-2018 proposed millage rates and tentative budget. The meeting of July 27, 2017, is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Present.
Please stand while we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That moves us into the presentation for the 2017-2018 budget. Dr. Blackburn.
Madam Chairperson and members of the Board, Mrs. Penny Zurker, Chief Financial Officer of Financial Services, will give a presentation on the proposed millage levy and tentative budget for 2017-2018.
The last time I brought you a budget update was on July 11th, and the last couple of weeks have been spent juggling various budget balls to achieve a balanced budget that meets the district's strategic priorities. Tonight, I'm here to share those results with you. This is a good representation of where we are. Dr. Blackburn guiding the district towards meeting its strategic priorities while I'm trying to keep the revenues and expenditures balanced along the way. That'd be nice to start out with something light. This is off on a light note. I came across this picture back in the 90s when I was doing budget for another school district. Need both? Okay, we need both. And I always thought it was a great representation of school district budgets. Tonight, we're here to conduct the first public hearing as required by the Truth and Millage Act. Following the presentation regarding the 2017-18 proposed millage and tentative budget, we will allow for public comments on both the proposed millage levy and the tentative budget. The Board will then consider three recommendations by Dr. Blackburn. One, adoption of the proposed 2017-18 millage rates. Two, adoption of the 2017-18 tentative budget. And three, authorizing the superintendent to notify the property appraiser and tax collector of the proposed millage and rollback rates, the date and time of the second and final public hearing, as well as adjusting the revenues and expenditures if necessary prior to the final hearing. As part of the presentation, we will be reviewing the district's enrollment projections, taxable property values, and proposed millage, the proposed budget, and the timeline for completing the budget process. Let's begin with our student enrollment projection. Here we see a historical review of the district's student membership over the last 10 years, as well as projections for the 2017-18 school year. Student membership represents the number of students being served for one or more periods. From 2006-7 through 2012-13, we saw a decline in membership. Beginning in 2013-14, we have seen increases in student enrollment. For the 2017-18 school year, the district is projecting to serve 75,630 students, a .82 percent increase over 2016-17. Student membership is converted to full-time equivalents for funding purposes, or an FTE. An FTE represents a student's actual seat time in class. FTE is typically lower than student membership. There are several reasons this occurs. One example includes a homeschooled student who takes a class at one of our high schools. The homeschooled student is counted as one student in membership, but only .17 of an FTE. Similar to student membership, we saw a decline in FTE for the first half of the last 10 years. Unlike student membership, we did not begin to see an increase in FTE until the 2014-15 school year. This year, our projected FTE is 72,961, an increase of .87 percent over the previous school year. Taking a look at our taxable property values. As can be seen here, Brevard experienced double-digit decreases in taxable property values in 2009-10 through 2011-12. In 2013-14, we began to see taxable property values rise. Since 2012-13, taxable property values have risen 41.8 percent. However, we have not yet reached the high of 2008-9. If the rate of increase in taxable property values continues at the average of the last four years, we anticipate we could reach the 2008-9 high next year. Proposed millage. The district has three millage rates that it levies each year: the Required Local Effort, the Local Discretionary, and the Local Capital Improvement, commonly known as School Capital Outlay Tax. The proposed Required Local Effort, or RLE, is 4.32 mills. It is important to note that while the Board levies this tax, the state requires this tax to be levied in order to receive state funding from the Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP. The Required Local Effort includes 4.312 mills for the current year of funding and .008 mills as an adjustment for the prior period. The adjustment is required because the actual levy for the prior year did not provide the total number of dollars required to receive the prior year's state's funding. As a result, the state requires the Board to levy an additional tax to adjust for the dollars received the prior year. The RLE makes up 65.8 percent of our total millage levy. The discretionary local effort millage is .748 mills. The discretionary millage is subject to compression by the state. As a result, the state guarantees the local discretionary funding at $489.79 per FTE. The discretionary millage at the 2017-18 taxable property values provides the district As a result, the district will receive an additional $108.32 per FTE for a total of $7,903,136 from the state. The Local Capital Improvement Millage, or LCI, is 1.5 mills. The LCI millage will provide the district $51,658,103. $35,359,193 of the millage is used to pay the district's debt service, leaving $20,454,750 for the district's capital needs. House Bill 7069 requires school districts who levy the 1.5 capital mills to share with eligible charter school districts based on a funding formula provided in House Bill The funding formula allows for the debt service as of March 1, 2017, to be deducted from the levy revenue before calculating the charter school's share. The amount of LCI remaining after debt service is calculated by the sum of the district capital outlay FTE and the charter school's FTE to obtain an allocation factor. The factor then multiplied by the charter school FTE to determine the maximum amount of LCI funding that could be shared with charter schools. That amount is then reduced by the amount of PICO funding the charter school receives. If the maximum amount of LCI funding is greater than the PICO funding, that difference is the amount to be shared with charter schools. For the 2017-18 fiscal year, the amount of PICO funds to be received by charter schools is greater than the maximum amount of the LCI that could be shared. As a result, the district is not required to share its LCI dollars in this school year. Here we can see the 10-year history of millage levied by the Board, as well as the current proposed levy of 6.568 mills. It is important to note that the total millage has decreased 1.544 mills, or 19.03 percent since its high point of 8.112 mills in 2011-12. I think it's also to point out that the decrease between 2017-18 and 2016-17 is a result of the legislature deciding for the second year in a row to roll back the RLE rate to the amount of dollars that is required to receive the same revenue as in the previous year. This decision costs the district approximately $13 million. The Truth and Millage, or TRIM Law, requires us to compare our proposed millage to the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage required to provide the same tax dollars received in the prior year at the current year's taxable property value. The rollback rate is calculated by taking the prior year tax levy minus new construction divided by the current year taxable property value. The 2016-17 rollback millage rate is 6.4526 mills. TRIM requires us to state that the proposed millage is an increase of 0.1154 mills, or 1.79 percent over the rollback rate. Let's take a moment to look at the impact of the changes in taxes on a homeowner. In the first block, we see a home valued in 2016-17 at $100,000, with no change in value for 2017-18. However, the home does have a homestead exemption, reducing the property value by $25,000, making the taxable property value $75,000. As a result, the decrease in total millage, the homeowner would see a $26.10 decrease in taxes. The second block represents the same home valued at $100,000 in 2016-17, but has experienced an average increased value of 8.53 percent, with no homestead exemption. With the taxable property value increased to $108,530, the homeowner will see an increase in taxes of $21.23, despite the decrease in the millage year over year. This increase is a result of the increase in property values. It's important to note that the 2017 Save Our Homes cap for increases in property values is .7 percent. As a result, many homeowners will not experience the increase in taxes demonstrated in the second block. Now we'll take a look at the proposed tentative budget. Here we see the proposed 2017-18 budget for all major funds. The total budget for government funds, which is operating, special revenue, debt service, capital projects, and enterprise, which is our after-school childcare program, includes revenues of $747,713,833, and expenditures of $771,772,160. The Internal Service Fund includes the district's self-insured programs, employee medical insurance, workers' compensation, auto and general liability insurances. Anticipated premiums total $70,676,632. Anticipated expenditures are $83,414,635. The increase in expenditures is a result of the district opening three employee health clinics in 2016-17. It is anticipated we will see a reduction in claims over the next few years as a result of these clinics and our employees attending them. As we have discussed in previous budget workshops and updates, the district has worked hard to scrub district-level budgets and identify funds that could be used to fund budget priorities of the district. As a result of this scrub, and the new funds provided to us by the state, the district is able to fund the following budget priority items. 16 instructional coaches for early literacy, a new applicant tracking software to replace our antiquated beacon system, athletic assistance to our secondary schools to provide them an equal opportunity to provide athletic events for students, the automation of our personnel files, Avid program at two additional sites, centralized internal accounts, choice regional busing, the restructuring of our alternative learning centers, and the implementation of the pathway schools, a salary increase, school security officers, social workers in our schools, South Lake Choice School, a suicide prevention program, and Tier 1 social and emotional supports. Next steps in our budget. The first public hearing is tonight, in the boardroom. The tax collector will be mailed the proposed tax notices the third week of August following this meeting, and it will include the advertisements of the second public hearing. The second and final public hearing to adopt the budget and millage will be held Thursday, September 7th, at 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Notification of the final millage and budget will be sent to the Florida Department of Education, the Florida Department of Revenue, and the Brevard County Tax Collector following If anyone would like any additional information regarding our budget, they can contact me at my office, and the information is available upon the screen. At this time, this concludes my presentation, and we will open the floor for any questions from the Board.
Does any Board member have questions for Ms. Zurker? Mr. Craig?
First of all, Ms. Zurker, thank you for putting this all together. I know you and I work together quite a bit, but as the finance champion, but I do have to say that your transparency in the entire process is welcome and very refreshing.
Thank you.
And well-needed over the last few years. So thank you for including the entire Board, and including the public, and everyone else who comes along in the process, so that we all are on the same page. Can you, specifically on page 16, similar to what we talked about maybe yesterday, can you just expound on a couple items there, just for our listening audience to make sure that we understand what some of those things include, like the automation of personnel files, specifically automation of personnel files, the choice regional busing, South Lake Choice School, and the Tier 1 emotional supports? We use those as, I mean, those are attention grabbers, but I think we need to understand exactly what it is you're saying, because I know what it is, but I want to make sure everybody else knows.
Absolutely. The automation of personnel files is to take what is now a paper file contained in a drawer in the HR office and convert that into an electric system. So it would be a scanning process to get all of those documents into a database that now allows it to be searchable by the information that is in it. There have been instances where we need to know what's going on with our employees, and currently, it takes a person sitting down with a file and flipping pages to see what's in there. Choice regional busing is similar to the corridor busing we did a few years ago. We've had lots of requests from parents to re-implement this. This would be a regional busing system that operates on a spoke wheel that would help students move from one area of the county to another to attend any of our choice programs. It would not be a door-to-door solution, but it would be where a parent may need to bring the child to a local regional depot-style stop at maybe one of our schools. They would board a bus and come in.
But that funding right there, that's not the entire program?
No, it is not.
That's just a piece of it.
What we're looking at for this year is just what it would cost us this year. If we accept this, we would be accepting for next year, which is a net cost of salaries, fuel, maintenance, after our increased FEFP funding for transportation of about $1 million that would be recurring beginning next year.
Okay, thank you.
The South Lake Choice School, this is working on the opening of South Lake. This is bringing in the personnel that are required to be getting that school up and running for the 18-19 school year. And that too, once it's committed to, commits us to additional expenses next year that would be recurring that go along with the opening of a new school. Tier 1 social and emotional supports is a training program that we would bring to our teachers to help them in assisting our students with social and emotional needs. I believe the program is called a CHAMP's program, and it's supported by Dr. Thady and her team.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that we understood that some of those things, you know, when we see choice regional busing, I would think we're bringing back corridor busing tomorrow, and that's not the case.
It's much smaller than that.
This is a piece of the steps to get there, based on what the Tiger team put together and the recommendations, and there's still a lot of work to be done to figure out how that looks and how we do things, but it's moving in that direction.
Absolutely. This would be to get us going for that in 18-19, be able to get buses ordered and move forward in that planning process this year.
Great, thank you.
Any additional Board member questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zurker. I appreciate you taking the time to run through all of that with us, and I believe that brings us to the public hearing. The public hearing is now declared open. We will, in accordance with Florida law, accept the speakers in the following order. 2017-2018 proposed millage levy speakers, and then the 2017-2018 tentative budget. At this time, are there any individuals that would like to address the Board on the 2017-2018 proposed millage levy? I have you. Yeah. This particular call is just for the millage levy, and then I'm going to call for budget, and then I will call for you. Going once, going twice, anyone to speak on the proposed millage levy? At this time, are there any individuals that would like to address the Board on the 2017-2018 proposed millage levy? Are there any individuals that would like to address the Board on the 2017-2018 tentative Are there any individuals that would like to address the Board on the 2017-2018 tentative budget? I have to ask twice, Mr. Bennett. It's law, sorry. I see you shaking your head like, "No, you don't have to ask again," but I do. Okay. Then at this time, I will open the floor to speakers on issues outside of those two. We have in order Dan Bennett, Anthony Clucci, and then Vanessa Skipper.
I may have been confused. I'm talking about the millage and the budget and whatever else we cover in three minutes. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you, Penny. Fascinating conversation, as always, about the budget and millage. I know by law you have to give that information. We appreciate it. There's a slide in there where you get to your priorities, and it was shortly after a slide where you talk about available funding. It was all small print. It looked like in this version, it was in the $12 million range. I'll remind you that without the heroic efforts of the Florida Education Association and 140,000 members of the state of Florida joining together, eventually Superintendent's Association jumped on board, the School Board Association jumped on board, and we put a lot of pressure, facet, at the state level. We put a lot of pressure on the governor to veto the budget, and it wasn't actually vetoed, but they ended up in a special session and added funding to the budget. Without those efforts of FEA, it's very possible that that final number to fund your priorities might have been a negative number, but it ended up slightly to the positive. We watched with great interest when we saw your priorities. And you have priorities, and they're all good things, but I want to remind you that there's one priority that stands out from the rest, and it's the people who are doing the job in the classroom. It's the priority that does more to affect the education of a child than anything else, than any armored car, than any automated software program, than any employees that are not yet hired in this district, than any busing program. Your top priority needs to be our salary enhancements. You've told us that before. You've mentioned that to that effect before, but as you go back into your chambers and work on where this money's going to come from, whether it's recurring or nonrecurring, I'm going to urge you, and other people are going to urge you, to remember that top number one priority, and even if funding is limited, it is still your top priority. In addition, I'm going to give you a challenge tonight. It's not going to be an instant challenge. I'm going to urge you when I walk away, don't forget this challenge. I challenged a past superintendent and a past Board to work on this. It took them about five years to get it done. I challenge you to get it done faster. We saw in that presentation where Penny was showing last year's millage, it was .4 mills less than the year before, and that millage was .4 mills less than the year before. So we've lost .8 mills in a year. What's going on with all the building and all the rising in property values? The legislature has decided we will not cash in. That's practically a tax cut. People have an expectation that when they open up the TRIM notice, they're going to see their taxes cut every year. When we ask that, you just let them be the same. You all have a lot of capital right now with the public, I mean emotional, political capital with the public. It's time to talk about going to the public, like other counties, including Orange County next door, and asking for the right to raise local property taxes up to a quarter mill, up to the amount that the state legislature cuts it every year. We shouldn't have to endure a cut now that we're out of the recession. So I'm asking simply put, year 2018, put it on the ballot for you all to have the right, the voters to give you the right, to increase the millage by up to a quarter mill when the state legislature cuts it. Have the courage. It's controversial, but do it on behalf of these folks in the room, which are your top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Well, I'm Anthony Clucci. I'm the Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Today, I got to head out to five schools. We have a Survival Orientation for Success program going on at many of the schools, which is an orientation for new employees funded with union money. Really enjoyed talking to those new teachers from all over the country, and, you know, I told them all the same thing. We have a pro teacher school board and a pro teacher superintendent. That's what I tell them. As a matter of fact, I tell all teachers that whenever I talk to them. What happened at the bargaining table on Monday, I'm having a harder time saying that this is a pro teacher school board and a pro teacher superintendent. Rejecting 13 out of 17 reasonable proposals. I hope and recommend that you correct that. With the budget, this is another opportunity to do right by teachers. I hope and recommend that you put those dollars towards teachers. Each and every one of you ran on a pro teacher, build morale, give teachers raises platforms. I know you did when I supported your campaigns. Pay our teachers what they deserve. I really want to continue to call this school board and superintendent pro teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clucci. Ms. Skipper.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Skipper, Second Vice President of Brevard Federation of Teacher and proud cocoa tiger. Looking forward to getting back in the classroom to teach English this year, while at the same time advocating for our profession. I too spent the day... I too spent the day traveling around the south end of our county, going to high schools and middle schools and meeting, meeting new teachers at their survival trainings. And I too stood in front of them and talked about having a pro teacher superintendent and a pro teacher school board, and how refreshing it was that there was open dialogue between the school board, the superintendent, the district, and teachers. And I hope that that is something that we all remain passionate to because really when we stand together, we're stronger. When we work together, we're stronger. And that takes me to talking about salaries and teachers and the budget and what we're facing. And as Dan said, if it had not been for the 140,000 teachers standing strong with the Florida Education Association around the state, we would not have seen that funding increase. I believe that there are five counties that have signed onto the lawsuit to sue the legislature for House Bill 7069. I believe Miami, Broward led the charge. I believe Miami Dade signed on today. I think Volusia Bay, and I can't think of who else is. Lee, Lee County, thank you. It's time, y'all. All right? I, I don't know what else to do. I had somebody at our building representative training yesterday bring up a great analogy, and he talked about how long it took us in this county to get the half penny passed. Took us a long time. Why, we failed that first time. That second time we came back, I'm telling you what, had it not been for those teachers sitting right there, the teachers around the county that fought, they got out on their weekends, they got on the corners, they were at the zoo handing stuff out, that half penny would not have passed. I am confident of that. I'm confident of it. And a teacher made an analogy that got me thinking. We all know what just happened to our Indian River Lagoon, right? Ton of fish showed up dead in the water. And what happened? Right away on the ballot, there was initiative to have a tax increase to adjust that, and people voted for it because they saw those dead fish in the water. I'm asking right now for you guys to stand up with us. We cannot take what Tallahassee is doing to us anymore. It's not right. I care about public education. I care about my students, and I care about this profession, and I want it to continue. And I think that it's time for us all to stand together and fight back against that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. That concludes the public hearing. That will bring us to the recommendations for the adoption of the proposed millage rates and tentative budget. Dr. Blackburn.
There are total of three separate motions for the board to consider. I will read each of these recommendations into the record and request board action. Adopt proposed 2017, 2018 millage rates of operating fund required local effort 4.320, local discretionary .748, capital outlay 1.5, total 6.568.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve the superintendent's recommendation on the 2017, 2018 millage rates. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn.
Adopt, adopt the 2017, 2018 tentative budget of operating 609,943,592, special revenue
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Craig. Seconded by Ms. Eskovich. To adopt the 2017, 2018 tentative budget. Is there any discussion?
Yes. We had a question from Mrs. Zucker. I could not tell by the fund book what category in this budget the federally connected reserves are in.
It is in this bu, um, budget, it is moved into the operating to be able to fund the priorities that we have discussed.
Okay, then I can't support this. I still stand that that money should be capital.
Is there other board member discussion? Mr. Susan.
Can we ask Andy to expand upon?
Well, as I did in the last meeting, the federally connected money was asked for, that, that bill that went through was asked for because we were deficient in capital funding. And I just feel that we need to abide by what we asked for. I understand clearly that the state has given flexibility in those funds, and it is perfectly appropriate by law that those funds can go into operating. But because I advocated and still continue to advocate for fairness and capital, and that's what that was asked for, then I'm gonna stand by that.
Mr. Ziegler, if I could just share with you, I left our previous discussions very much on the fence about how I felt about that issue because I too was here when we had the initial discussions, when we thought the dollars were going to be taken away, when we, we were having to fight to get them the second time around. And so, one of the first things that I did after we left our last discussion on those dollars being moved was I reached out to Thad Alwyn because he was the champion, really, that, that started the movement for us and really fought at the state level for us to get those funds.
Absolutely, he did.
And I simply told Thad, you know, he, this is what we're discussing, and out of respect for you and the work that you did to get us there, I would really like to know your intent. I can read the statute. I can see that it's an operating dollars, but I would really like to know your intent and how you feel we should use those dollars. Not that that should be the be all and end all, but I felt like he should have a way in, given, given his involvement in that situation. So Thad's response initially was, well, you guys figure out what you need it for, and that's where you should spend it. And I said, well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you respecting, you know, the, the role of the local school board. I said, but I, I really kinda know what it, I need to know, or I, I would like to know, what, what are your thoughts? What, what sounds good to you? What do you think is appropriate? And he said, his only concern is that when we have to fight for these dollars again, we can justify the use of those dollars. He said, so he would not support us utilizing the funds if we were doing, say, a capital project in Palm Bay where we don't have a heavy concentration of federally connected students. Nothing against Palm Bay, but he was just using that as a location example. He said, but at the same time, part of the dollars are focused on students and part of the dollars are focused on all of the property, the millage that we lose because of the, the amount of federal property in this, in, in Brevard County, right? So his hope was that when we have to have this discussion again about saving those dollars, that we have used them in a way that we can say, we did this, this was the benefit and this is why. So I started looking into the two factors, one being the students and, and the other being the property, to just kind of get an idea of what we're dealing with. And so, you guys, Penny sent you guys all a copy of the statute. And in that statute, you notice that the federally connected dollars are based on the number of students that we have in the district that qualify us for federal impact aid, and then the federal property in the, in the county, right? So per statute, that's what it is. So I started digging and, and found some interesting things that I think really need to be a part of the consideration. Our federal impact aid dollars, there are several different categories. So we have, we get dollars for students that live on base. We get students for people who work on base, on federal property. We get federal dollars for students whose parents work on federal property in the county. So like, I have a dear friend that works at the Wildlife Refuge, federal officer out there, so her child would be counted in that, that tally. But there's an, another interesting aspect, and that is that it also includes children that live in low rent housing. So I actually got the breakdown on our, our impact aid. Who are these students that are making up the student group that justifies us to get this federally connected student supplement, right? And found some interesting things because I kind of in my mind had, we have pockets of federally connected students in the district, right? Like, I always think of Patrick when we talk about federally connected. I always think of pockets of students there. But what I found really kind of threw me for a loop, to be honest with you. Out of the 5,533 students in Brevard County that are included in the calculation for our federal impact aid, not our federally connected, although it funnels to the federally connected calculation, out of those 5,533 students, only 5.8% of those students live on base, on federal land. And that makes up .9% are civilian families and then that live on base, and then 4.9% are employed by the government. Our low rent housing students make up 9% of that, so almost twice as much as our students actually living on, on base. The bulk of the students that qualify us for that money are people who, whose, students whose parents work on federal property in Brevard County, and that's 63.4%. So when you look at the federal property in the county, that gets really kind of mind-blowing. I reached out to the property appraisers office and got some information there. 60% of the land in Brevard County is governmental. 60%, which means that it's exempt from property tax. If you look at where the federal land is, and, and I, maybe you guys have visualized this before. I always had in my head federally connected, Patrick Air Force Base, that was my focus, but it really spans the bulk of our county. So where I'm going with this is, I don't know that we can say that there is a pocket of federally connected students. I think they are throughout our entire district. So you tasked me at the last meeting with figuring out a way that we can use those dollars to support our federally connected students, and A, I would argue that I'm not sure that there's a way for us to do that through capital. Because where are we going to spend $2 million in capital that we're going to impact the entire district of students, unless we're looking at purchasing buses or something like that? B, when I look at the needs of those students, when I'm looking at low-income students, when I'm looking at students, you know, who do live on base, the thing that comes to mind is there are some very key things that we're looking to fund that would be important for those students, that we could certainly defend when we have to defend in Tallahassee again. When you look at the social workers that we're looking to provide, all of the social emotional supports that we're working on, like you, I was part of that initial discussion about it being capital. But when I look at the statute and it's included in operating, and I look at the students on which they're basing those dollars, I have a hard time, I, I, I'm not sure that I could go to Tallahassee and defend a capital expenditure of those dollars having an impact on the students that are dispersed throughout the county. I just, I, I don't know how I do it. I can certainly support an operating expense that impacts the entire district. You know what I mean? Not a nugget here, a nugget there, but something that is going to, to reach district-wide.
And I can't argue with any of your analogies. I would even argue with you that we are a very military-heavy community from northmost area to the southmost area, and that a good percentage of the families in Brevard County are military or federally government-connected. So there's, there's definitely an argument that that money can be used for their benefit. One of the other issues I have, though, is that in our budget priority process, we knew that we had that money in reserves for capital, and we did not bring it into play in discussing our budget priorities. And in a separate conversation that I had with Dr. Blackburn, I gave some suggestions for utilizing that capital money. And he had a very good point at the time I didn't respond to. He said, how do you justify in the ninth hour, bringing up priorities that we didn't discuss at the table during our workshops? Well, because I wasn't thinking they were part of that, this is part of a different set of money, but now we're incorporating that into the budget. I may have thrown other things on the table, but I figured they could come out of the capital money. So now the ninth hour is not really, we could make changes, but I was looking at justifying some military, some, some capital expenditures that would benefit us, but what wouldn't, wouldn't have come out of general revenue. And I'm not clear yet whether putting this in general rev, general revenue could pick up some additional things or not. So, again, because I still believe, and I don't think yet that we are where we need to be with capital funding. I still believe that the state has a serious problem in their capital funding formula by setting a flat millage across all counties because, look, for example, in Orange County, I believe that when you calculate, and by the way, for our listening audience, a lot of things in our world for the entire state are calculated in per student. And I believe it's in Orange County that their capital revenue is at least two, if not three, times per student what it is here in Brevard. When the half-cent sales tax goes away, if we don't get it renewed, we're gonna be hard-pressed to even maintain our buildings. That's, that's just a pure, cut-and-dry math problem. Any teacher in this room can figure it out, what it costs to maintain buildings, and we won't have that revenue when the half-cent sales tax goes away. So capital, by far, has not been solved. It's been temporarily relieved. So I'm, I have, I don't want to back off the importance of capital until we know that problem is going to be solved for a long time to come. So, might I agree that some of that could be used on the operating side to benefit students who would fall into the appropriate category? But I don't believe that's the plan for the money at this time. I believe it's, the plan is to use it just as general revenue. Unless I see a plan that that money's gonna be used a little more specifically than just general revenue, I'm gonna, I can't support your argument, as valid as it is. And it is very valid. I'd have to see that that money in operating is gonna be used as you just outlined because I don't believe that's the case.
Ms. Zucker, would you like to speak to that issue? I know that we-
Actually, yeah, I had that discussion with her, too.
I'm sorry, I was making a note. What issue specifically am I speaking to? I apologize.
Mr. Ziegler was expressing, in, in response to the information that I shared with him about the, the students being all over, all over the district. His concern was that he has not seen anywhere in what's being presented that those dollars are, the federally connected dollars are intended to be used for the types of programs that I was talking about that would have district-wide impact, like the social emotional supports, the social workers, the, those sorts of things.
Those are what we're planning, the budget priorities, and when you look at the majority of the larger ones, which is the 16 instructional coaches, the social emotional, social workers, the tier-one social emotional supports, the regional busing, and whether you want to consider part of it going towards raises that benefit teachers across our district who are teaching those children. those children. All of the money that we are using are going in to help fund those priorities. There are many of those priorities that will benefit all of those students.
And that's, that's true, except for the fact that our budget workshop documents will show that is true prior to moving the federally connected into the budget. So to say that we're only picking those up because we're moving that federally connected in is, that's not true.
If we do not move the federally connected, we cannot fund all of the priorities I showed earlier in the presentation. Only a small portion of those would we be able to fund.
Ms. Tuskovich, I think you had a question?
I was just going to ask more specific. If we do not move the federally connected over, specific, which items, since we ranked them, do you, I don't, it's not in the presentation, so what would be saved?
It would reduce what we have available for any kind of salary increases. I'm quickly trying to get to the list.
We would, in essence, Ms. Tuskovich, we, if you remember, our priority list, it was Southwest salary increases.
Southlake.
Or, yeah, Southlake, sorry.
It was like three or four things, I couldn't remember which four they were.
It would, what would continue to be funded would be some portion of a salary increase, Southlake Choice School, suicide prevention, Choice Regional Bussing, Instructional Coaches.
And everything else on that list would not be funded, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Craig, I think you had a question or comment?
So, since I was one of the three that was here as well during that whole discussion and the lobbying for the federally connected dollars, I was the same impression as Mr. Ziegler, until I started looking at the, kind of holistically, at this year, and I think Ms. Zierker's presentation kind of hammers home the point when we look at the rollback rate being what it is, what it is. And I think the flexibility that the legislature has given us is exactly what school boards across the state have been asking for, is to have the flexibility to apportion funds year by year as they need to. I think, even though this is a small sliver, I see it as a positive in the fact that we even get to have a choice. And it doesn't mean that next year, the choice will be the same, or the year after that. We would continue to have to look at that, and obviously, there's recurring costs with some of the programs that we're talking. I would like to make sure, though, that we, Ms. Tuskovich's question was right on, but I think the answer might have gotten muddled a little with the salary increase, because we aren't even at that point, and so we wouldn't know where, we know that there are exact programs that just wouldn't make the list anymore.
Exactly.
There are a top five, though, that are, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that those happen.
Correct.
At what level, some of those is a little bit different, but I don't want to muddy the water with the fact that the federally connected has really anything to do with salary increases, because it really doesn't.
Correct, sir.
I mean, it goes into a pot of money, but if it's not there, we are going to start from the bottom and start working our way up.
Yes.
And it would just depend on where those things fall. And we would probably have to look at the bottom of the list and maybe reorganize a little bit based on how much money is available, that type of thing. So just to make sure that we're all on the same page there. But going back to that same point, though, that Mr. Ziegler brought up, I agree completely. You know, Ms. Belford brings facts to the table. I think the facts just cement my opinion that in this case, this year, and in this, in this situation, we need to take the opportunity, as a board, to utilize our best judgment and put it in a place where it is going to affect students this year, and I think it's the right thing to do.
And to reassure our teachers that salaries are high priority and at the top of the list, and are not, would not be impacted by what I'm suggesting.
Any additional board question, comment? Mr. Susan.
I will say that a lot of the budget priorities were made prior to us being privy to this information, and being the fact that, all of a sudden, we have the opportunity to bring more operating dollars to the table, which does change a lot of the priority lists based upon what's inside there, in my mind, to the fact where maybe not new issues that come up, but there are issues that are on there that I feel that we could possibly fund by doing this. And by saying that we're not going to do those based upon doing this is not fair. I think that by us moving to do this changed the narrative of how we selected our budget priorities, including me dropping off a ton of my requests based upon looking at a number that I thought was what we were at. I basically cut off a lot of the stuff that I was going to argue to fight for, including a lot of resources for teachers for professional development when they go in the classroom, and a lot of other things that I dropped. I literally dropped it because we didn't think so. And I think that it's unfair to sit there and say that we are now going to look at a prioritized list that changes that up. I do, I feel that, I do.
Sue? Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate that, but I think we have to go back to where we did the budget workshops. There was no number in mind. In fact, that was the premise of the budget workshop, was, look, we have absolutely no idea how much money we're going to have. And we prioritize things based on what's right for the students in the district, not based on a number. Nowhere did we ever write a number on a board, nowhere did we ever put a number in front of anything, because, in fact, we made sure that we didn't do that, because that was my whole point, was like, if you start putting numbers into it, then it makes the whole budget priority not even, now you're just trying to fill holes with amounts of money, right? So you've got to take the whole thing from a big picture, and looking back, is this the way that we did this, but we had absolutely no, we didn't have any money. We didn't have any budget, we hadn't, the state hadn't even come out, they hadn't even voted on anything yet. And so when we made these recommendations, they were the right thing for the students, and yes, I think one or two, I can't speak to the things that you pulled off, I don't know, you know, that's your personal reasonings for that, but I hope it wasn't because you didn't think there was going to be money, because we didn't know what the money was. Nobody did, including the governor. I mean, nobody had that information in front of them. And so I think what you've seen in, or what we see in front of us is taking now what we think is the, is the amount of money that we're going to have, and apportioning it to the items starting at the top of the list, and then start working your way down, and then you start running into things that you can't fund totally, and then, so you have to kind of skip that one and see where the next one is that can actually fit in, which is what I think our discussion was during that time. And maybe I'm, you know, wrong, Ms. Zierker, but I don't think we ever had a number associated with any budget workshop discussion, did we?
That is correct. We started this process with the purpose of setting what our priorities were, so when we reached the point of knowing what our funding was, we had a guideline to begin with on how we were going to use those dollars. We were trying to get a step ahead of reaching that point.
Can I respond now?
Yeah, one second, Mr. Susan, and I will turn it back to you. I just want to point out one thing, and that is that what the motion that we have forward in the item that we are currently discussing is the approval of the, or the adoption of the tentative budget. It is not our budget priorities. So if you would like to discuss budget priorities, changing order of priorities, adding or removing things from priorities, we certainly have an opportunity to do that prior to the next hearing, but the item before us right now is the proposed budget. So the only item of current discussion that is applicable to approval of that adopted budget is the use of the federally connected dollars in the operating fund, just to clarify so we're not getting way off on, Mr. Susan, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Zierker, did you present at each one of our board workshops, not only the amount of money that may be estimated inside of the budget, but also the items that we progressed had dollar numbers next to them? Is that correct?
The budget priorities had costs, estimated costs associated with them, yes.
And did you also give presentation as to where we might be, tentatively, with dollar amounts associated to those amounts?
I gave long-range forecasts based on the budget projections coming from the state, yes.
So you did present with numbers, along with our budget priority list that had numbers on it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, there were no guarantees of any amount, and, Mr. Craig, you're right, we did that as a what is important, but there's no doubt in my mind that we had those highs and good and bad limits of what might happen in the back of our heads, getting updates as there were revenue estimations as legislation was moving forward. And conversely, we did give Dr. Blackburn's charge, I believe it was at his evaluation, to bring us a recommendation for how to use the reserve federally connected. So those were never linked until the ninth hour, and my thought process honestly was not an even higher figure. So I was being very conservative, because staff clearly, as we know, brings us the things that they feel are the most impactful to our students. And I think, if we all recall, I said, well, I'm going to defer to the superintendent on most of these things. We were asked to put them in a numeric priority order, and I kind of pushed back on that, and we did a three-category order. Because of that, I was willing to say, okay, I can do that, but for the most part, erred on the recommendations of staff, because I just thought it was going to be tighter than even at the high end, I thought it was going to be tight to even get those things done. So my mindset wasn't there, that we had extra money, but maybe we do need to revisit priorities, and thank you, Mrs. Belford, for clarifying. We're just, right now, just adopting a tentative budget. I'm just not sure that I approve of that reserved federally connected being into operating. Going forward, I'm probably more willing to consider that, but I had believed for a couple of years, that was capital money. That has always been my understanding, it was clear, concise, I believe the board even supported that belief up until now, this ninth hour. So at least for that reserved, unspent federally connected money, I take issue with that. Going forward, I can support where you're going, Mrs. Belford.
Mr. Susan.
Is there any indication, Ms. Zierker, if, where the other districts are going? Have they utilized operating out of the federally connected? Are we the only one stepping out? Is there any indicator there?
I actually, in my discussion with Thad, that came up, and Thad's indication was that the majority of districts are spending it in operating.
Okay.
They are.
I'm not sure, you've got to realize, a lot of the districts were just overjoyed that they were included in the calculation. They probably weren't even clear upfront what the initial intent was of driving that. That was all driven by this district and Senator Thad Altman, who, you know, brought home the bacon in a big way for this county. And those other counties were just along for the ride. So it wouldn't surprise me that they weren't as dedicated to its initial intent as, at least, as we are. And I know, Misty and John, that you were, because we've had this conversation multiple times. I'm just not ready to get off that reserved amount for operating yet.
Any additional, Ms. Tuskovich?
Sure, I'd like to chime in. I have no problem moving the federally connected over. I wasn't here, I have no preconceived notions, I see where we need it. But I did want to say thank you, Penny, because we sat down and went through some of the details of the budget, and I was thoroughly impressed with every nook and cranny that you found a dollar to pull out of and pile up together. I think it's $5 million, maybe, you saved just from-
Five and a half million.
Five and a half million from-
From district-level dollars.
Department-to-department at the district level. I mean, that's raises for teachers, and that helps fund some of our priorities, which are important to us, to help our students and to help our district. So I am grateful that we have you. Thank you. Well, can I also add that I'm also disappointed that the gifted program didn't make my list.
Ms. Tuskovich, why don't you, you should have a conversation with the superintendent before you leave this evening.
Will do.
Any additional discussion on the motion before us, which is to adopt the 2017, 2018 tentative budget?
No, ma'am.
Then I will call for a vote, please. And the motion passes 4 to 1. Dr. Blackburn?
Authorize the superintendent to take the following actions. Notify the property appraiser and the tax collector of the proposed 2017, 2018 millage and the following rolled-back rates. Operating fund rolled-back rates required local effort 4.3552, local discretionary .6979, capital outlay rolled-back rate 1.3995, total rolled-back rate 6.4526.
Am I calling for, are you still going? Okay.
Notify both the property appraiser and the tax collector of the final public hearing on September 7, 2017, at 5:30 PM at the Educational Services Facility, Viera. Adjust the revenues and expenditures, if necessary, prior to the final public hearing.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig. Is there any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Prior to the adjournment of the hearing, the following statement must be read. The proposed 2017-18, I have a question. I just want to clarify, so we don't get into trouble later, Ms. Enval. I read earlier, the public hearing is now declared open. We took our speakers, and I said that concludes the public hearing. This statement says-
I think it's a mis typo in this, it should say, prior to the adjournment of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure, because I know they're really finicky about that stuff.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Prior to the adjournment of the meeting, the following statement must be read. The proposed 2017-18 millage rate necessary to fund the tentative budget exceeds the rolled-back rate by 1.79%. Am I good? Okay. Saying no further business, that concludes the public hearing, and this meeting is now adjourned.